All right. Got a little bit there. Not quite at seven yet. Okay, all right. Good evening, everybody. Just a quick reminder to the council. Make sure your microphones are on and close by. So, welcome to our Thursday, July 19th, 2022 city council meeting. We are here in person for the most part in City Hall with a remote option for any of our staff and council members who can't make it and our public as well. So it's really great to see so many people. I think, I think we got a new record for post COVID so far. So we're going to kind of jump right in. We're going to start off with an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So go ahead and join me, please.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us all together today. Please guide us with your wit to have the wisdom and the, and the passion to make the decisions today that are right for our community. Thank you for everybody who's here tonight to participate. It's just wonderful that they have so much interest in what's going on in this fabulous community. Please bless and oversee all those first responders who are watching out for us on a day-to-day basis as well. And please stand by all of our, our teachers and, and our, our children as well, trying to be had over the last few weeks. Amen.
States of America. For what it stands.
Quick, quick, quick challenge on feedback there. So those who are joining us remotely, if, just make sure you're on, on mute unless you're participating. Thanks. All right. So we'll go ahead and call meeting to order. It is 7:01. We'll go and do a roll call. Councilmember Cargill.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fuller.
Here.
Councilmember Spencer.
I'm here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Solberg is out of town with family. Do we have a motion to excuse him tonight?
I move to excuse Councilmember Solberg, please.
Thank you. We have a second. We have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Solberg. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Councilmember Solberg is excused for tonight. So all right, we will go right into agenda approval. Mayor Pro Tim Fuller.
Mayor, could I ask a favor of another council member to kind of assume my duties for the night since I'm not feeling well?
No problem.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I want to move the agenda as presented.
Great. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second to approve the agenda as printed. Any comments, discussion? Not seeing, hearing any. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda as printed, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, ayes have it, six zero. All right. So we are on to citizen comments already. So just a reminder for those of you who are here, if you'd like to speak and assist and comment, there are some yellow sheets over on the table by the entrance there. If you just put in your name, whether you're Liberty Lake resident or not, and turn the sheets into Jen Camp over here on the end, she'll get them to me. And you'll have three minutes to speak on whatever topic is truly citizen comments. So if there's anything we need to follow up on, we'll make sure we have your contact information and get back with you. So similar instructions for those on Zoom. If anybody who'd like to make a comment, just please send Todd Henderson, our meeting host, note in chat, and he'll let me know if you would like to speak. And again, three-minute limit. So I'm not seeing any yellow sheets. Anybody online talk? Nope. All right. So no citizen comments. There will be another chance at the end of the meeting. All right. So we move quickly on to announcements, proclamations, and special presentations. We do have Blair from Clear Risk here to make a presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
So make sure your mic's on if you would.
See, is it on?
Yes, thanks.
All right. So I've been down a little since I'm just a little tall. So my name is Blair Coke. I'm the risk manager for the CIAW, you guys' insurance company. And also with me today is Wes Craig, the program administrator for the CIAW. So I am here today. For some of you may know why I'm here, but the reason why I'm here is to present to the city of Liberty Lake an award. The CIAW is recognizing the city of Liberty Lake with the Excellent in Risk Management Award. This is called the Scott Collins Award. The reason why it's called the Scott Collins Award was it's named after one of our risk managers that passed away this past year during COVID due to cancer. So the risk managers decided to name this award after him in his honor. And so the city of Liberty Lake has won this award and due to the hard work of Jen Camp and her staff. So we have Slocombe here as well. I made him come, so he's not very happy with me right now. Sorry. But I just wanted to recognize there's you guys' staff. How hard do you guys have been working? This award is for you guys. When I started as a risk manager, your guys' loss ratio, you guys were on the MLIP, which means Membership Loss Improvement Plan. You guys were over 40% loss, 60% loss ratio. Now you guys are under 40% due to the hard work of your staff. So I would like to present to the city this award. And if I could get a picture with your staff and you guys, and we'll be putting in our presentation and it'll be in our newsletter later.
Great. Thank you so much. And we want to, Trevor Slocombe's here. I don't know where Reagan is. See, oh, is he sick? Okay. Well, council, if you want to just come up here real quick. We'll make sure.
Trevor in the center. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Blair. So they tried to keep this a secret, but when somebody tried to put it on the agenda, we were all too nosy. So, okay, great. Thank you again for coming. And we will make sure the entire staff is aware of this and we celebrate. Actually, I think we're probably due to schedule our summer barbecue soon. So that'll be a good excuse to celebrate. All right. Next up, we have the Ridgeline Band Boosters. Well, I'll let you introduce yourself. And we do have some slides, Todd, that I had sent to you. So I'm not going to steal your thunder. Welcome and looking forward to your presentation.
Well, congratulations on the awards. We love awards. So I'm Emmy Lou Newell. I'm the co-Vice president of the Ridgeline Band Boosters. And I'm here tonight to request support from your American Rescue Plan money for our nonprofit organization. But first, I would like to introduce my support and the reason for doing all this, our band and color guard kids. So some are here today, including our two drum majors, Gracie and Owen. So can the two of you stand up? Owen is our senior drum major and Gracie is our junior drum major. That's my kid. And stay standing up. And then Mr. Parker, would you join them, please? This is our band director. He is the mastermind behind all the brilliance that happens and we can't say enough good things about him. And then all the rest of the band and color guard kids, would you stand up, please, too? And then parents, too. So we're all here for support. Thank you. All right. Thank you guys so much for coming, for your support. What a phenomenal group of leaders and performers. Our marching band truly reflects Ridgeline's goals of belong, inspire, and grow. And we were literally the first team out on the turf this year as we opened Ridgeline High School. Thank you guys again so much for being here. So in a nutshell, who are we? Ridgeline Band Boosters. We were kicked off this last year by a great group of parents that got together, created a 501(c)(3), created by parents and families and music students at Ridgeline, and we're dedicated to support and supplement the needs of the music program beyond the district-provided curriculum. If you don't know much about marching band or color guard, there are a lot of extra expenses that go beyond what the district can provide. So we are here to fundraise and to provide support, and we are enhancing the educational experience this year of over 100 kids. So we have, I think, what, 33 color guards this year? Did I hear? That's a lot of color guard. And then I don't know how even many we are at for marching band, but it's up there. So over 100 kids and a lot of staff members. So we are so excited. And these kids work hard. Some of them right now are already out on the field or inside the school, working on music. It's kind of a year-long commitment, but they love it. They keep doing it. So let's see, slide two, please. Is that, do I do say that? Holler at you? So just a little background, competitions and performances. We have a lot of parking lots filled with buses and trailers. This is kind of our hangout. This becomes our home. Home away from home. We do everything here. Students and staff spend a lot of time at the trailer and bus. And more than just storage and transportation, the buses and trailers are a central part for changing their clothes, preparing, practicing, relaxing, eating. Most importantly, lots of meals happen, having fun, and of course, building memories. It's also a safe place for our students. It's easy to find. These marching band competitions are huge. So it's easy to find your trailer because most school buses look similar, but you can find your trailer. And it's also a safe place for over $150,000 in band, color guard, and electronic equipment. I mean, if you've ever purchased an instrument for a kiddo, you know, they are not cheap. And we have awesome stuff this year because we got brand-new things. So at the bottom is an example of the Central Valley High School Theater trailer. Most local high schools have a trailer to transport their gear and Ridgeline. We need one, too. So that's what we're working on right now. Slide three, please. So I am here because we have launched a marching band trailer campaign. And we are hoping to purchase a brand-new trailer. Now, not the truck part, that's not what we need to do, but the trailer. And this is just a schematic of one of the ideas that we have of the design. We haven't pinned it down exactly, but pretty fun. We would purchase the trailer from Kentucky Trailer, brand-new, and the inside would be customized by Clubhouse Trailers. The option for this is it's a lot safer. Trying to do these things on our own, Central Valley High School did it and found out it's not safe to cut into a trailer. So there's a lot of safety factors, but also safety for the students and the band gear that goes in it. It's definitely more economical in the long run. And the market right now for used trailers is actually, actually crazy inflated, kind of like used cars. So option for buying used is really not an option for us. And we expect that our brand-new, custom-designed, professionally-built trailer will last for decades. So this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing. We really won't put that many miles on it. So we expect it'll probably last the lifetime of the school, hopefully. The alternative, which we did last year, is to borrow trailers from other schools, use personal trailers and rent U-Hauls. And this is not a long-term solution. We will be sharing a trailer with U-High again this year, but will still, in addition to that, still need to rent two large U-Hauls. And they are not safe. And you can't just throw your stuff in there like it all rolls around. So we need to have specific ways to store the equipment safely. And the cost of that is, it's costly. You know, if we were to rent for U-Hauls, that's approximately $2,000 just for one competition, and that's not even paying for drivers. So let's see. So one of our options that I did want to point out is we would love to be able to frame this maybe as Liberty Lake's own. We've tossed around a lot of different ideas. We really have a lot of pride that this is Liberty Lakes High School. Next slide, please. So this is a sample of some interior pictures from other places. At the top, you can see a semi-trailer that has three different entrances, which is really convenient when you're trying to massively load a lot of equipment, rather than just going up a ramp at the end. They have a lot of equipment that's on wheels. It has to be pushed. This way, we can efficiently get in and out, get the kids home quicker. The bottom left-hand corner, you can see is a schematic of what the interior would be built out to look like. So as you can see, it's pretty extensive detail. It's not something that, you know, I'm going to do with my nail and hammer. So and then on this side, the uniforms are stored. You can see in this other picture, and there's a place for everything, a place for the instruments and all the equipment, and it can be safely stored. Let's see, the next slide, please. So we are not asking the city to do the heavy lifting. We are getting financial support from the larger community. But the community is excited about and proud of our new high school, rightly. So it's an amazing place. We had an amazing first year. We have a great administration. Everything's been really positive coming out of Ridgeline. And this is our chance to come together as a community, just show our youth how we value their efforts and contributions to the arts and to the art-loving culture of our community. So what we're looking at is $100,000 for a trailer, $50,000 for the custom interior build-out. And we are seeking sponsors and donors from the community, and donors of $25,000 and above will have their logo placed on the back. So that's kind of what we are offering to our donors. We do have three donor levels for businesses, but hope to earn the donation from the city to help us achieve this goal during this next coming school year, 2022 to 23. Otherwise, as you can imagine, this is kind of a daunting task, and it could take several years and a lot of cost in the meantime. And we are facing a tough economy and businesses are stretched already. Next slide, please. So our ask today is $75,000 to $100,000 of your American Rescue Plan money. And I brought today a brochure that I'm going to leave with each of you that does have more details in it. Gracie's going to hand those out for you. And I'd like to open it up for questions right now, if you have any questions.
Councilmember Cargill.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of questions. If you were to get this money in the next few weeks, let's say, how quickly can you get the trailer? Do you have to order it? And does it take time, obviously, to put everything inside?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we've kind of placed out some of those scenarios. Best case, we think, probably by the, let me say, maybe by into eight to nine months. So hopefully by heading into next summer. Yeah. So that's why it is important if we can get it sooner.
Okay. And then how much do you have raised right now?
We have $7,500.
Any other questions?
Councilmember Cargill took mine. Councilmember Fuller, just wanted to give you a shot there if you have a question. Nope.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Just one quick question. What's, what's the plan to engage the businesses for the logo spots?
So we actually do kind of have our own marketing plan. We're starting to, we've hit a couple businesses and kind of feeling out where they want us to come in at. So we have, we're putting together a team. We're almost all in place with what we're going forward with our pitch. And we're, we have a full spreadsheet of all the businesses we hope to hit, but we're really starting at the $1,000 markup because we hope not to have to get down to the smaller level, but if we need to, we will. So right now, we're starting out big to see what interest there is and where we can go from there.
Right. Councilmember Cargill.
If we wanted to put this on the agenda for approval in the next meeting, do we make that motion now or do we wait until?
Well, I just, you know, if, if there's no, if nobody's opposed to putting it on the agenda, we'll put it on the next one. Is there any, anybody opposed to putting it on the next agenda?
I think the linking that I have concern about is making sure, making sure that we have the whole gamut. So we know what we're, we're voting on. And there's several other items as well. I have to admit, I'm definitely a fan, was in the color guard myself.
Yeah.
Totally get that, but definitely want to see the whole gamut of who we can support and make sure that we take those funds and spread them as far as we can.
Yeah. And I think, you know, if we put on the agenda, the further discussion will be on how much. I know you and I had talked a little bit about the idea of matching. Right? Does the city want to pledge to match dollar for dollar up to X? But we can, we'll, we'll see about getting it on next agenda, which would be August 2nd.
Excellent. Genius to be here then, or?
It'd be great if you could, in case there's questions.
Great. Thank you so much.
If you want to do a concert out front before we start.
I mean, we'll, we'll do it. We'll scan on our heads out front if you want us to. So thank you so much. And then as you go, just look at these cute little faces over here. All right. Thank you guys so much. And are you okay to excuse ourselves now? Okay. If you want to stay, you can, you guys, if you don't have to. So thank you so much.
Sounds like they've got homework to do or anything tonight.
Thank y'all for coming.
All right. We'll wait a couple moments here. Let our audience dwindle. All right. So we are already up to reports and inquiries. So we will start with city council reports. Anybody from council want to report anything?
Sure.
Go ahead, Councilmember Spencer.
So my family and I tend to touch a truck. And that was amazing. So props to all the city staff and everybody that was involved in organizing that because it was, I mean, my, my youngest just turned three today, and he loves trucks and all of that. So we were there as long as we could stay. So it was awesome. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Maria Norman.
Well, talking about trucks and transportation, the Liberty Lake Lions Club is now officially going for Barefoot in the Park, and we're going to do the bed races. So for all of you that want to get a bed race going and a team, we'd love you.
The challenge is on. I think we had enough for two teams last year, and then it didn't move forward. So we'll put that challenge out again to the staff and maybe, you know, staff versus BV or something like that. And we'll, we'll, it'd be great for the city to, to participate. Well, maybe the PD do better than they did against the fire department. Yeah. Because they got to make that a challenge. All right. Any other council reports? Okay. Mayor's report. I'll just make it short and sweet. It's been a crazy couple of weeks. As I know you guys know, with all the events and some other things going on, I'll just give a quick update. So Mark McBoy will be joining us officially August 1st. So he's probably going to be remote for the first week or so while he gets the family moved and everything. But we've got a lot for him to do remotely for those first couple of weeks. He'll be doing his paperwork, getting to know the directors, getting a data dump from Jen and everybody else. But we're really excited that he'll be starting with us right on time on August 1st. And we'll keep you guys posted on his actual presence here. But obviously, he will also be setting up meetings probably with each one of you to kind of get to know you and your priorities and how you think. So looking forward to that. All right. City administrator report. Thank you, Mayor. So as always, we're going to kick this off with David Williams on road construction. David?
Hey, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council members. Good evening, citizens of Liberty Lake. Let me make sure.
David, you're on mute.
Great.
Probably accidentally hit your spacebar. I do that a lot.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. Well, good evening, everyone, again. Okay. So I want to give you your update for city engineered projects, the projects happening in Liberty Lake, and then also the traffic control update. First slide, please, Todd. Thank you. Okay. So as you all know, there's a project, okay, one more time, Country Vista and Legacy Ridge. Next slide, please, Todd. This is the Signal Project. Right now, we're having issues with supply chain. We are hoping that the product will, our poles will arrive sometime in August, but we actually are on a delay for this job. So hold tight. The project is underway, but we are in the middle of a supply chain issue. Next slide, please. Okay. Now, the Kramer Bridge Project, a lot of people, I'm going to get into this later on in my, in my presentation, but a lot of people are wondering if the job is actually underway. It is definitely underway. The roundabout admission has, is right currently under construction. And the MSE walls have been brought in and are actually being set up. Just know that if you don't see work on one end of the job, it actually is happening at the end of the, end of the job. And there's a lot of work that's, that's actually happening. So we just ask citizens, please be aware and cognizant that if you don't see the workers around and you think the job is actually not taking place, that it might be on a break. It's not. It's actually taking place right now. And this is actually a, a good sign that you're going to see the bridge start to take, to take shape as those walls go up. Next slide, please. Next slide, please, Todd.
It's, I think it's delayed on your side, David. It's, we have projects up on ours.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, gotcha. Okay. So now the Kramer Rehab Project, the roadway's subgrade under construction right now with heavy rolling and compaction. The back T, the back T pressure testing also took place as well. This is actually a kind of a crazy time for this job because we're actually constructing the roadway right now. So we're asking these citizens, if you're traveling along the pedestrian pathways, please stay off of those, and then definitely stay off the road. You'll, there, it will be heavy equipment going up and down that roadway much more rapidly and more frequently now that we're actually building the cross-section up, and the curb and gutter will be going in soon and shortly. Next slide, please. Okay. And again, one more time, the trails are closed along Mission Avenue and Kramer Parkway. This is just closed during construction. We hope to have these all up by the beginning of September. Next slide, please. This is the traffic control. You haven't seen it yet, but it will be taking place soon where we, where we will be taking the, the right lane of Country Vista going eastbound. Just know that that's going to be for the construction traffic going into and out of the Trailhead Golf Course. That would be pouring concrete, the AC asphalt concrete overlay, and a lot of construction traffic. Next slide, please. This again is the Mission Avenue round, the Mission Avenue Detour. This will take you up to Indiana, over to Harvard, and just gives you a different way of getting over to the River District, I believe, and in that area over by Hello Sugar. It's just another way to get there for everybody's convenience. Next slide, please. And this is the detour that leads you out of Legacy Ridge. If you're going out the west side, it'll take you down to Sprague, around over to Green, to Green Acres, and then the preferred route going out of Legacy Ridge, from Legacy Ridge Boulevard, or Legacy Ridge Drive, over to Country Vista at the roundabout up there. Next slide, please.
It's switched.
It's switched. Okay, cool. Has it got the yellow? Yes, it is. Okay. This again, one more time, is just a caution for everyone. I get more phone calls during the day and in the week about if a construction zone is active or not, and if we can actually like change up speed limits and the like. All the construction zones along Kramer and Country Vista, they are actually closed. We just ask you to please obey the signs that say, do not enter, and please be safe. And if you have any questions, next slide, please. Just email me, or you can give me a phone call, and I greatly appreciate it. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. I've got a question for you, David.
Hey, David, just regarding the Kramer Road Rehab, could you just briefly explain back T and water pressure testing, please?
Yeah. Okay. So water pressure testing, when you're doing both of those tests, you have to make sure that your main water line actually is sealed. So that's your pressure testing. If that line is not pressure tested, you'll have massive leaks that will potentially undoubtedly erode your roadway, but could cause a massive water break in the middle of the road. And the back T testing is just flushing the line, making sure that there's no bacteria inside the line, and that actually has to go through a whole test process to make sure it's clean.
Cool. Thanks.
Thank you.
The workers.
Any other questions for David? All right. Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
Okay. Thank you, David. Moving on, we have several openings on commissions. So we're begging and pleading for anyone who might be interested to please apply. Some of these openings have been open for a while. We have Parks and Arts openings, Planning Commission openings, and Community Engagement Commission openings. So if anybody at all is interested, even on the Parks and Arts Commission side, we have student positions open. So we hope to be working with the school as school opens back up in the fall to kind of put a call out to Ridgeline to see if any kids are interested. But please, please share that information. We really would like to see these openings fill up and But please, please share that information. We really would like to see these openings fill up and have these commissions complete. Lisa or David, do you want to add anything to that? Okay.
No, I do not.
All right. And then I'm going to throw a last minute item in there, actually two last minute items. One, I received right before the council meeting tonight from Spokane Valley Fire Department that there is going to be a burn ban in effect for the city of Liberty Lake beginning July 22nd. We typically see this every year in some, in some time and, and through our summer season. It does not include backyard barbecues, geminis and other patio deck warmers as long as only approved fuel is used. So as soon as we have more information from Valley Fire, we will post that on our city website and on social media, David G. And we'll get the word out, but that again begins July 22nd. So I think that's Friday. And the last thing, we have a lot of events going on. I won't read through everyone. Please welcome you all to Barefoot in the Park, August 6th. If you can join us, that'll be really fun this year. Lots of movies going on with Kiwanis at well, I see multiple parks, but really mostly Pavilion Park. And then Shakespeare in the Park is our latest one, August 21st at Pavilion. It's an annual event. And then just a quick update on our mower for those of you that maybe don't follow social media. I think everybody does, but our mower, our mower that disappeared on Friday out of Rocky Hill reappeared Friday evening. Last thing. We got it back safe and sound minus a key. That was the only damage we saw. We were very, very lucky, very fortunate, very grateful that we got that machine back. You cannot just go down to the store and buy that machine. It's a $60,000 plus machine. So it was a really big loss for us and it mowed all of our, mowed Rocky and Pavilion Park. We did have a meeting on site today. Staff had a meeting with PD and with Blair Clear Risk Management. Thank you for being there, Darren. And the chief was there and Clear Risk and city staff. We, we kind of came up with a new game plan. Several years ago, we had an assessment at that park on safety with several barn break-ins, just malicious mischief. Now it's to the point where there's theft. So we're regrouping, reassessing, and we're going to resecure that barn in a little bit different manner. A little bit tighter security than what we've already had up there to hopefully ensure that we don't have this happen again. In the meantime, if you're up there, you'll see shiny chains wrapped around the door. We do not have anything of value stored in there until we can secure the site fully to what we agreed upon today. So are there any questions about that?
I have one question. Do we typically leave the keys there or is there?
Yep.
I mean, can we lock them up in a different location?
So that was discussed today. We're going to end up doing some kind of a secure box within the, the system that we take the key out. I mean, you, you secure the barn, you think it's safe, right? The, the other issue with that is in a lot of that equipment, the same key works in multiple machines. So while that's not a, a true cure-all for the, the situation, it will help if we have a lockbox that's secured to the concrete in some fashion and the keys go in the lockbox in case somebody does break in and try to steal the machine. So yeah, we did discuss that today. It's unfortunate that we have to go to that route. You know, it's like, how far do you have to think ahead? And so now we find ourselves thinking outside the box, bouncing off of law enforcement, bouncing ideas off of risk management to try to outthink the burglar. So it's a different day. So any other questions?
Along those same lines, I'm sure you guys talked about this, but are there that many staff that's using the equipment that they can just take the keys with them when they go?
Um, you know, that's an option. We could bring all the keys back here to City Hall, but again, we've had issues here. So I mean, where does it end? So lockboxes are the best thing. And, and we have lockboxes actually out at the Public Works Yard where we were broken into with bars on the, bars on the mobile office out there. They broke in, they stole the lockbox. So I don't know. You know, we're try, again, we're trying our best with PD's efforts and encouragement and with risk management's encouragement and efforts and ideas to outthink the burglar, but we do the best we can. And if risk management and PD is supportive of what we do, that's, that's the best we can do.
That's great.
Jen, did you want to touch on any of the vandalism we've been seeing?
Oh, do I? Well, I don't know how, how in the knows of the councilmembers.
Yeah, it's, you know, I, I thought about mentioning it today. I will tell you, it is much more significant this year than we have ever seen. And I've been here a while. To the point that Pavilion is reoccurring, we hit on a weekly basis and things that you, you all don't know about. We don't publicize it. It's small things most of the time. But we're trying to stay on top of it. In fact, Trevor Slocum and I had a discussion today after we left our meeting with law enforcement at the Rocky Hill Barn. And we're going to step up our cameras on the barn. So you may see an addition of cameras on all four sides with sensor lights that go off and alerts that will go to PD after certain hours in case there's movement up there. And so I think we're going to end up following suit at Pavilion because the mischief there is horrendous. And I, and I say that not because it's a big deal. They're, they're easy fixes, but they are time consuming fixes. And every single time that our staff has to attend to a vandalized issue, it takes away from their regular duties. And so please be patient with them. We do get behind on some things because they're tied up all day long repairing a restroom facility at Pavilion. Actually, yesterday, for the first time in my whole career here, my crew came in and alerted me to the fact that we had vandalism on one of our golf greens. We've had vandalism in the past on our golf greens, but this was to the point where they burned in impressions, graphic impressions on number nine green, which is below the deck that everybody sits on and views. So that's a little bit different story because you can't just go and scrub that off of a green. They killed the green in spots and in impressions that we have to now go cut the green out and rearrange it. So again, I think the frustrating part for us is that it just, it takes our guys away from their daily duties of taking care of things. It takes them away from what they're really good at. And they end up getting stuck, you know. I send the mayor the pictures of the ripped out stalls at Pavilion. And it takes our crews a whole day to go and re-hook everything to the walls, reattach everything and, and whatnot. So it, it's definitely a battle. And, and we're not the only ones.
Jen, are these typically happening at night, overnight?
Not always. Yeah. Most of the time it happens overnight, but there are quite a few times where it does happen in broad daylight. And
Are our restrooms closed after a certain period of time?
And we have automatic locks. So just so you know, on that, that end of things, we, a few years ago, put automatic locks on all of our restrooms. We used to leave them open overnight because we could do that. PD would shut them if they were able to get to it. If not, it wasn't a huge deal. We ended up putting automatic locks on where they would lock around midnight in the summer season because we have so much activity going on. The park's not an issue. Town Square is an example. We have actually backed it all the way up to seven o'clock PM to lock. And we get complaints that we're locking them too early. Well, you know, there's got to be a balance. And so we're in that situation with Pavilion where Pavilion is now, I think Sloke has it locking at 8:00 PM, which is unfortunate because that's not even dusk. But we're trying to get ahead of the riffraff, you know, causing problems. So it's challenging.
So how often are, are these individuals being caught at, at some point, whether it's after the fact or, you know, in the act?
I think.
Very often?
I, you know, I'll speak to our side of things. We work very closely with PD. And in the grand scheme of the world, our problems are small compared to what they have to deal with on a daily basis.
Sure.
And while they do everything they can, I mean, a wrecked restroom stall is nothing compared to what they deal with on an hourly basis. So, so while ideally we would love to go through hours and hours of footage and assist them and help them and, and it, it's not feasible. It's not feasible. So we just end up repairing it. We report it. We, we have a crime report and we move on. We report it to risk management if it's worthy.
I was just curious as to whether there's been a trend, if it's people coming outside of the community or if it's the, you know, just the adolescents in our own community. A little bit of both.
Jen, I really appreciate the share and I agree with all the judgment of the actions that have been taken. I'm grateful for the staff's efforts to try and address the problem.
Sorry to bring everybody down, but I think. I do appreciate that because it shines a light into what we, we are dealing with. So. All right. So there's nothing else. That concludes my report. All right. Okay, we are on to Parks and Arts Commission. Lena, hi. Thanks for joining us. Thanks for being patient.
Hi, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council. We have a lot to report to you guys. We've been pretty busy. And I have a few slides to show you too, which is kind of exciting. So I'm not sure which slides up first, but Todd, if you want to put the first picture up. Okay. So this is one of our utility boxes. This is going to be the utility box at Harvard Road, kind of across from the River District Welcome Center. Inside that Welcome Center, they have some Native American art and we decided to mimic that on the box outside. So you can kind of see a visual of what the boxes will look like. Just beautiful vibrant colors, Native American art on, on both of those boxes. And next slide. This is our box that is across from Ridgeline High School. And for this box, we actually used artwork from Ridgeline High School students. So each panel of the box is a different piece of art that they created. Eight in total. And you can kind of see, it's kind of hard to see on here, but you can kind of see in that little corner what it'll look like in person. I know it's hard to visualize when it's just panels. But you can kind of see what it's going to look like. And if we go to the next slide, I think this is a picture of our artists, which I thought was really cool. There they are. One's missing, but so these are the artists at Ridgeline that created the artwork for that, that box. And they were all really excited and helpful. And it was a great kind of partnership with Ridgeline. And so STCU has approved both boxes. And I was hoping to get that donation letter to you guys for this meeting, but it didn't get on there. So it'll be on, on your next meeting. They're going to pay the vendor directly. It's just a donation, a letter that you guys need to approve for us, for us to get them up and on the boxes. And next slide. Maybe. Yes. The commission also recently approved a dedication plaque for the sculptures at Rocky Hill. Just so that people understand kind of what, where that sculpture came from and who the artist was. So that should be hopefully on the sculpture soon. We just approved it at our last meeting. So that's kind of exciting. We also have lights outside that sculpture now, which we can change according to the season, apparently, if we want to. So just kind of a beautiful addition, I think, to the sculpture itself. And then we also, over in Rocky Hill Park, we are changing our story walk a little more often. Kind of a partnership with the library. We've been changing them out more frequently, which I think the community is really excited about. And we are, we just approved another partnership with the library where the commission is going to purchase some trash barrels. And they are going to have some teen programming to paint, paint those barrels and different themes and this is a great way, I think, for to get the community involved, our youth involved. And we can use them obviously for events. Different things. So it's useful and hopefully can be a really fun addition to our parks. And then as far as barefoot goes, we're going to have a rock painting table there as we did a few years ago. Just a fun way to interact with our community and have our commission kind of be there and do something with just the young people, get them interested in art. Do we have any questions?
Looking, any, any questions, anybody? Oh, I don't see any. Great, great work, Lena and crew. We're always excited to see more of the utility boxes being covered. And thanks for getting the students involved with that. And also the tribute to our, our indigenous Native Americans. It'd be great to, great to have that piece up there.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. All right. Next we have the Re Lake Water and Sewer and Water District bill.
Bill.
Welcome.
A little different. Virtual meetings. Is that the new deal now is nobody comes and they watch it on TV? I remember we used to do this, that a whole place would be full of people and, and we, we, we still have people. We don't have. So we thought we were lacking at the district because nobody comes to our meetings. But I think we're getting as many as you are now. And that seems odd. We have staff that show up. Apparently you don't. So that's
We always have a representative there.
So anyway, back to no more nonsense. So we're inviting the new city manager to attend our meetings. Either virtual or however, Jen has been really good about showing up and she adds a lot to our discussion and we appreciate what she's done. So we, we're going to offer that to your new city manager. Maybe he'll never show up. I don't, I don't know how that works.
But most, I'm sure he will.
Okay, good. A couple of things that are hot right now is the backflow prevention program. So there's a little buzz in the city about, you know, we're doing this annually. And I'll give you a little background. So the first year we implemented this program, 42% of the backflow prevention devices failed. This year, only 6% failed. So you can see the program is working. And then the question is, why are we doing it every year? Well, we live in an area that freezes in thaw. So that's important that we keep the program alive because we don't want to go back to the old ways. Unfortunately, to date, we've had to shut off 34 residents and 17 commercial accounts because they haven't done the backflow. And generally, as soon as we shut them off, they'll get it done or make plans to have it done. So it's a, it's a pretty effective tool when you don't have water. So people kind of get on board really fast. So the gal here was talking about ARPA funds. So we're going to, we're going to be your next, your next council meeting on August 2nd. We're going to make a presentation for a little bit of a pitch for some of those funds. We need some cybersecurity at the, at our, at our district, district. And it's a pretty big item and it's pretty important that we have that. So our manager and a couple of the staffers and probably me will be here to make a presentation. So look forward to that. That's about it. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Not seeing any. Thanks for joining us. All right. We're off and running. Get this, no workshop discussions.
There it is.
General business. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, A, B, and C?
Madam Mayor, I move general business action, excuse me, general business items 10, A, B, and C, including item C vouchers in the amount of $1,518,450.29.
Second. We have a second from Councilmember Kurtz. All right. Any discussion or questions? All right. Not seeing any. All in favor of approving consent agenda items, A, B, and C, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion passes 6-0.
Madam Mayor, I move general business action item 11A, prove the expenditures for Winter Glow's spectacular in the amount of $10,000.
Second. We have a second by Councilmember Kurtz. All right. Any questions or comments on this action item?
I just really think this is a great showing of volunteer effort in the community. The city's able to provide resources, make things happen. And people step forward by this dozens to commit. So it's a great thing for the city.
If you, you, you had the ears perk up on, on one of our Winter Glow members out here, thousands.
While Mark's office coming up, I'll, I'll mention to the newer commissioners, this is something that we've been doing for the past several years as Winter Glow started. So it's not out of the norm.
All right. So Mark Sabba is here to answer any questions if you guys have, have any from Winter Glow. All right, so Mark Saba is here to answer any questions if you guys have, have any from Winter Glow.
I do have one comment.
Can you, can you do it at the mic for us? That's okay.
I say way down right into my, what I wanted to bring up is volunteers. I'm bringing, I'm on the Engagement Committee, Commission also, and we're going to be discussing that tomorrow also. Our volunteers for to set up Winter Glow have deteriorated over the last couple of years. Our first year, we had more volunteers than you can shake a stick at. I mean, we had the whole thing set up in two days. The second year, we had it set up in about four days. This last year, we didn't get everything set up because we didn't have enough people. And so I'm going to be leaning on my commission, other people to help us out, you know, get the word out. We're going to try to, you know, we're going to figure out a plan tomorrow night to, you know, start now. So we can, and what we're basically looking at is the first weekend is the biggie, you know. And it's basically six hours Saturday, six hours Sunday, boom, we get everything out there. Then the rest of us who are there retired and we're there every day, we can do all the detail stuff. It's just getting everything up, set up, getting scaffolding up, getting the lights up. And then we detail it out, takes about a week and a half, then boom, turn on the lights and everyone enjoys it. So more to come, Wendy.
Mark, when do you typically go ahead and what's your first day of getting this set up and how many do you need?
Usually October, right? November.
This year, Wendy, it'll be, hold on, I'm sorry, I should have had that information. I didn't know I was going to get up here and talk. So, but. Yeah, we're probably gonna, our first day will be November fifth. And we'll probably be opening it up on the nineteenth, will be the grand opening, so it's two weeks. And how many people do we need? As many as we can get, honestly, honestly. If you, if you look at the whole spectrum of the park, we've got the zoo in the, in the, in the tennis court. We've got the snowman over there by the slash pad. We've got the train setup. We've got a new one that we, a new, a forty-five foot display that'd be going up this year. And we got the, we got those ugly looking candles that look ugly during the day, but gorgeous at night. And you know, those things with setting up the scaffolding, that's what we need the people to set up, help set up, that type of thing. Then we got the three, the two Ds, which are all the animated. Displays throughout the park. Just a number of things that, you know, it just takes time and it takes, you know. The physical, you know, labor that we need for that, so.
Okay, so all hands on deck, November fifth.
Absolutely.
Just one question. So is, are you mostly looking for adults or?
And we'll take kids. We'll take kids. We had, as a matter of fact, we had. Group from your group, you know, the Mormons were out there in full force, man, the first year and they were awesome. I mean, they were there for one day, Saturday, and they were awesome. They're, you know, they just kicked in and just whatever you want us to do, you know.
Was it the missionaries or the?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, it was the missionaries. Yep, yep.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Hey, my, my four-year-old nephew at the time was helping put some of the plugs in.
Absolutely. Any?
My question is, I mean, have you thought about like the football team, the basketball team, the high school?
Well, that's what I'm gonna go talk about with Dave and the group tomorrow night. My thing, my thinking is a deck of group, you know, they're always wanting to be involved with, you know, doing community. Football, I never thought, this is great, yeah.
Some strength.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But I think that, I think that there's still also a community service component to high school, if I remember right. I could be wrong. But there might be a way to advertise and get some kids.
Awesome.
In it as well.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Man boosters.
Yes.
Very good. What was that? I was just gonna say one other thing, I must know why, but that's okay.
While we've got you up there, can you give us a final number that you raised on your golf tournament?
Oh, yeah. We had our golf tournament this year, it was the first one. We had a hundred and four golfers. I projected, we were projected to make four to five thousand dollars. We ended up making sixty-seven hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Great.
I mean, it was awesome and it was one of those events that basically is word of mouth. And I, I call it the first ever Winter Glow Golf Tournament. And the reason why I call it first ever is because you put annual after it, everyone expects it the following year. Well, what will we do is what we did at the end, after everything was done. I go, okay, before you go, I gotta take a vote. You guys want a second ever golf tournament? You know, take a vote, everyone raise their hands, yep, we do and everything. So very successful. I'm looking at a full field next year. I mean, it included, hey, we had a hole-in-one prize, we were, someone would have got the hole-in-one, would have got a golf cart. I mean, so we invested our money into it and it came out, came out very successful, very successful. So it was fun.
You have another fundraiser coming up?
Yep, we have one coming up. It's a gala event. It'll be in October. More, more information to come. We're in the infancy, but it's going to be similar to the soiree. It's going to be a dinner and silent auction, live auction type of thing. More information to come on that and that'll be sometime in October.
Great, okay. So love to see you guys putting in your effort as well for the additional fundraising.
Yeah, it is. It's fun, it's fun. And, and one other thing. We did put in monies for the, the art money for twenty-twenty-one. We lost, you know, over the last two years with during COVID, we lost thirty thousand dollars. We got, make that thirty-five thousand is what I put in for. We got kindly, we got paid for the twenty-nineteen monies that we lost. Or twenty-twenty money that we lost for twenty thousand. And twenty-twenty-two, we lost fifteen thousand. And that basically was the golf tournament and the, and the, the. Sorry event or whatever you want to, gala event. And, you know, because we haven't been able to do that. So we're, we're asking for, you know, our share of the art money, you know, when it comes to about, you know. Because we have gone out, just to let you know, this is going to be the biggest and best event we've ever put on this year. We've, we went out and we've invested thirty thousand dollars in new lights. We are going to have at least fifteen new fixtures out there. And you know, the gorgeous three D animals that are over by the, that look really ugly during the day, but gorgeous and kind of pretty at night. We've had a lady that redid everything. They, she stripped them down and redid them. And they look drop dead gorgeous. The only ones that won't be fixed this year will be the elephants. But all the others have been done. She's, she's done a fantastic job. And this is all volunteer work. We have a group out there every Thursday that's doing relighting things, doing other stuff. I mean, it's a, it's a year-round event. And so it's something that we enjoy doing, giving to the city because the city enjoys giving it back to us. And, you know, it's kind of a team effort. And I got to tell you, it's. I go out there during the, during the event and it's just, it just warms your heart when you see those kids look up. And they're just big smiles. I mean, it is so cool, so. I really appreciate you all your support and, you know, I hope you vote for our, our another ten thousand for the, this year. And, you know, we'll be getting to hold you about volunteering. We'll let you know more about that.
Thanks. All right, so any more questions or discussion? If not, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Those in favor of approving Winter Glow Spectacular expenditure in the amount of ten thousand dollars, please say aye. Somebody's voting more than once. All right, any opposed? Okay, motion passes six zero. All right, we're on to item B.
Madam Mayor, I move general business action eleven B, authorize the execution of parametric task order twenty-twenty-two dash zero-three. Design of revisions to Liberty Lake Road slip lane in the amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and ten.
Thank you. Second, thank you. The second from Councilmember Cargill. Lisa, is there anything you want to go over briefly on this one?
Um, I am available for questions, but we workshop this. So I think it's, I think it's laid it all out for council, unless you have questions.
Does it may have any questions, Councilmember Cargill?
Lisa, I just want to confirm, so we're designing it or trying to design it this year, the plan is to fund it next year. Is that still the case?
That is correct, that is correct. And this is a time and materials not to exceed amount.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, welcome. We move you here. Just watch your step. All right, all right, so those in favor of approving the parametrics task order, please say aye. All right, and the opposed, right, not seeing any, motion passes six zero.
Madam Mayor, I move general business action eleven C, join the Spokane County Tourism Promotion Area. Or continue with existing tourism promotion agreement.
Okay, so.
One or the other.
Yeah, that was just what I was gonna say. So we need to have, this is the. We probably could have presented this a little bit different. So, Councilmember, would you want to amend your motion to be one or the other?
Madam Mayor, I move as eleven C, join the Spokane County Tourism Promotion Area.
Okay, do we have a second? You have a second from Councilmember Kurtz. All right, so I'm assuming we have some discussion on this. So Meg Winchester is here. Welcome, Meg, in case you guys have any questions. Want to, did you want to tackle anything before the council had some discussions?
Um, no, um, yeah, we, we were able to present to you all a few weeks ago. And discuss the merits of, of joining in with the countywide TPA. We still feel very strongly about that. We wanted to be completely transparent because we did commit to go back to speak to your hotels. And we did get one hotel that was against it of raising it from the two to the four dollars. At this point, the thing I'd really like to say with that is that the direct, when he says he's not seeing direct benefits. It's hard to really quantify that in so many aspects when we're doing, this is used as kind of a countywide promotion of Spokane, Spokane County. So pushing as much into our county, you know, representing all of especially our hotel partners and all as well. But would be more than happy to answer any questions.
I'll turn that over to the council, Councilmember Van Orman.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in two thousand and five, you know, is where I'm getting my history from. Can you kind of bring me where we are today from two thousand and five? And I apologize for not being here for that presentation. I actually was on the tourism board back then. So I'm kind of wondering, are we still working with the hoteliers that are here in Liberty Lake?
We absolutely.
And maybe I've got this totally messed up, but the hoteliers and then we also have the others that. Maybe festivals and so forth that come. Are we talking about the same thing?
We are. When it was, when it was established by state legislature in, in two thousand and six, actually, is when it took effect. Liberty Lake chose not to join into the countywide TPA. And so at that point, you all still, you saw collect, it was at two dollars at that time, it, that was the ceiling for it. And then turned around and remitted it to, to visit Spokane. And we use that money as we do with all the rest of it to promote all of that. We promote all the events in Liberty Lake and of course, represent the hotels there as well. In two thousand and twenty, we were able to get the ceiling on the TPA list lifted to five dollars through the state legislature. What we did at that point is we went back and opened up the TPA of the group that it was originally. And had it raised to four dollars at that point. Liberty Lake still stayed at the two dollars collecting their own. We've broken it open again and are at the process of redoing it. So what we've done is we wanted to come in, we wanted to invite Liberty Lake to join in the, the overall TPA. The county TPA to join, to bump up to the four dollars. What that does for you, it gives you representation on the, the, the commission. Right now, the, the TPA, from what I understand, is governed by your city council. The way the TPA in the county is organized is there's an actual commission made up of hotels, city leaders. Of each representation of within that, that TPA. So Liberty Lake would be invited to that. That oversees what the, what our marketing plans are, what the, the. Spokane sports marketing plans are as well. So what it would be doing is it would just be joining into that group, but it would be an additional two dollars at this point. For your hotels unless you all chose internally to do that and still stay on your own or stay at the two dollars.
Which typically is a pass through, correct?
Correct, yeah, it's below the line. It is absolutely below the line, yeah. Both the LTAC and the TPA is definitely below the line.
Okay. Then I did read the letter from the hotel and I understand where he's coming from. Hopefully, we work with Visit Spokane to make sure that this part of the county also is. Not competing per se, because the small, small towns don't have what the city Spokane does.
Correct, and, and what this does is this actually, we represent, we're kind of your marketing agent for the whole county. And we work and I have to give a shout out to the mayor. The mayor sits on our board and is very involved in a lot of our, our holiday committee and things like we're doing. And has been great on, you know, making sure that we lift up, we know what's going on in Liberty Lake. Sometimes it gets a little hard with all the moving pieces, but I was looking at the list from Jen today. Want to make sure all of those are listed on our events counter, calendar on our. You know, our website, I, you know, I want, I, I took down November nineteenth, that's the date that Winter Glow's starting. So we want to make sure that we promote that, both with our holiday campaign, our merry and magical. And then on, you know, all of our, our website, our holiday page, as well as our, our event listing of things that are going on in the county.
I do believe in regional. I believe that if we go forward together as this whole county, we can kind of earmark. What each and every one of the cities do and personalize it, so.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Cargill's hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to speak against the motion. And the reason for that is not because I'm personally against it, but because the, the only feedback we've been given from the community. Is that they do not want to see this happen. And that is not to say that we would not continue to fund tourism. We certainly would. We're just talking about whether we increase it from the two to the four. If we, if you, if we do not approve this, we can approve the motion to still keep it at the two. The money still goes to tourism. And I think it's, it's important for us to hear the feedback that John and others have. Now granted, we only have a couple of hotels in the city, so, I mean, one out of two is not necessarily a huge response. But at the same time, they are our two only hotels and we asked them for their feedback. We talked about in the last council meeting, which, in which this was discussed, that we were tentatively in favor of it. But we wanted to hear the feedback of the community and the feedback of the community is telling us that, that they do not want this. John, I just want to read from the letter he sent in. He said, "We must compete first on location, second on quality, third on price. Our neighboring competition in Idaho benefits from a much lower tax assessment to their guests. And ultimately, higher TPA or other hospitality taxation only increases the negative view of the Washington Government Agency anti-business bias." You know, I'm not necessarily saying I agree with that, but I do think it's important for us to listen to the community. So I'm going to speak against that motion, but if it fails, I would certainly make a motion that we continue to account for the two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just a matter of clarification, I, it, we're, we're not necessarily voting to, to abandon the current agreement that we're, we're in, correct?
So if we don't sign this, we continue with what the, what we currently have, correct, Sean?
Yeah, I mean, it would be a separate, separate agreement. I mean, I think it's an or, so if one failed, you're just using the other one as a new motion.
No, so, so it's either join the, join Spokane County or continue the existing. So we don't, there wouldn't be a second motion from what I understand, because we would just continue with what we have.
I would plan on making a second motion based on general business ten C.
And Mayor, yes, go ahead, Jen.
Dan, you just, your, your original motion was both, right? And I think you clarified it just for one.
It was clarified to join the tourism promotion area.
Right, so that, so if that's just that, when you would vote on that one, and to the extent that one continued agreement, then it would be a separate.
Because I didn't know, I, I didn't, I guess I was misunderstanding that we, I didn't think there was any action if we didn't do this. We just automatically.
And from what I understand, we, if, if this, if you all choose not to, we still have a year left on the contract um, with the two dollars. So there would be one more year to continue, just.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that was my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. Um, it's a little hard to hear everybody. So if you can speak into your microphones for me, that'd be great. Um, just a couple of clarifications. So I've been trying to figure out what the pro and con is to not join the county effort. Um, it seems like it would be a positive thing. I guess the only thing I question is the two dollars assessment, special assessment as it's in the document calls out exactly what it's to be used for. And I don't, that's the part of it, I don't know that, I, I'm trying to understand how our city would benefit from the special assessment item six uh, in this contract. And the way I read the contract is if we approve it tonight, then it's the two dollars plus the two dollar special assessment, which I'm, I'm not convinced that's, I'm in favor of that yet. So am I understanding all that correctly? Is that?
What that means is it was an original two dollars and what, and it would be bumped up to, with an additional two, because of the ceiling was, and then with the new RCW that came in, and we added the two dollars on a countywide basis. So it totals a four dollar aspect of it. So in order to join the county, it would be, everyone would be joining in at four dollars.
But the agreement calls out the special, how, how the use, what the use of the special assessment revenues would be used for. So I'm assuming there's a, here's the two dollar base rate that we've been paying all along, participating in. And then there's an additional assessment that's good till twenty seven and expires unless we renew it. And again, I go back to this, there's three items here that it's to be used for. And um, I don't see how that helps our city. Um, if you can maybe speak to that.
Yeah, it's, it's truly marketing. It, the, the more funds that we have to lift up, lift up our county, the more, the longer reach we can and hopefully we, and we get more people to come to our destination, just in that aspect. This money is used truly for marketing for the county, um, utilizing, uh, you know, for awareness for anybody outside fifty miles outside our, our county and further is what the definition of a tourism, a tourist is. And so that's what that funding, it's used by both us and for the sports commission as their marketing to bring sporting events into our county as well.
And I guess that's my point is most of the sporting events are in the city of Spokane, not Liberty Lake.
Correct. But you know, we do things at the hub and other events like that. There's a lot of, a lot of them are in the city, but there's a lot of outlawed ones as well. And so what we're trying to do is look for as many aspects of sporting events we can, and especially looking at the, the youth sports. And those tend to be the ones that are not in the downtown core aspect of it, just for the fact that those are, you know, great events for us. They come and they really experience a lot of things that we have at our destination. And our main goal is for people to come one time, see everything that we have, and to come, come again or come multiple times following.
So am I to understand then as well, sorry, Mayor, can I continue?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so are all these other, the others participating cities on board with the four dollars?
Um, correct. Um, the ones that we have that we have committed are the city of Spokane. Cheney is making a decision next week. Airway Height has chosen not to. Um, there's a challenge that, that, and I'll be completely transparent with you. The reason that they're not doing it is, is they have a um, casino, um, a, in there, um, that is a sovereign nation. So they have a little bit of a challenge with an equity out there. And um, as I think many of you know, the Spokane Valley is, has chosen to pull out and possibly form their own TPA.
What kind of revenue are we talking about from a city of Liberty Lake? What, what have we been?
It's about, it's probably right around, if I can remember, and I apologize, I don't have it right in front of me. We're probably looking about sixty thousand dollars at, with, at the two dollars.
So is it an option to participate on the county level and keep it at the two dollars?
It is not, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll say a few things. Um, again, you know, during the last presentation, one of the questions I asked was, you know, have we talked to the hotels? They said, "Well, we'll wait and, and talk with them." We wanted to wait until after we talked with you guys.
Correct.
We've heard with, we've heard from one of them that does not want to be involved. I feel like um, those are the ones that are most important to find out, you know, i- if, if their business, if they feel like their business is gonna suffer as a result. So I would tend to side with whatever they said. The other one did not respond. So I'm going to assume um, that, that they're, you know, one way or another, I suppose. But if we want to participate, like, uh, again, I, I asked the question, is this something where hotels can just voluntarily give money? You know, is, is there a tax shelter? Is, I guess that's the one question I had as part of this. Is there some sort of tax shelter or something built in that those funds that they're collecting that then they're turning around and giving to the TPA? Is, is there some sort of tax shelter involved? Is that why it has to go through the government rather than them just donating it to the TPA?
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's actually a state RCW, um, when you set up anything um, with this. So that's where the contracts, the RCW and all of that goes. So um, we, we, hotels cannot just levy any type of a fee and then give it to an organization. So that's the aspect of it. So that's why it is actually a state, you know, legislative RCW. And that's, that, that what it, what happens then is it allows each city or county to um, create one of these um, TPAs, tourism promotion areas. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Again, I, I think um, just going back to this idea that uh, we were presented uh, with this concept that the hoteliers are generally in favor of this. We found that one of ours here in this city is not. So I would tend to uh, vote, vote against this, this measure.
We have not heard from Councilmember Kurtz or Councilmember Dan. Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
So I just want to make sure that I understand kind of the biggest um, buckets for doing this. Um, the first one sounded like there would be beyond our mayor, who's a part of the board, additional representation for the city of Liberty Lake.
Correct.
The obvious difference in the price, two to four dollars. Um, and the biggest general benefit to the city is basically pooling our resources for marketing the Spokane area. Are there any other benefits the city of Liberty Lake directly or indirectly sees?
Well, again, as, as working with you, there's, there's different areas that um, we lift up throughout the year of looking at campaigns and things like that. And that's where we look at marketing plan, and that's where we ask for specific input as we move forward with these type of things. Again, this money is never, that's, it's very, very um, specific in the language in the RCW that this is used for overall marketing. Um, and I kind of look at it as, as like a thirty-two thousand feet. This is our money that we're spending to move out, to let everybody know about Spokane, number one. Let them know all the amazing um, things that we have in our county, you know. Everything from, you know, our outdoor, our restaurants, our entertainment, our parks, our hike, you know, all of those different things. That's all used on that overall basis. What we're trying to do is we're trying to drive people to our website. So they start to investigate all the different aspects that we have on our website. We're trying to drive people to come to stay more than one night because they see there's so many different things to see. So they move all over the county and see everything that they have, or they come back again because they missed something. You know, those, those are the type of things. It's hard to really exactly pinpoint with this fund that we're going to, um, you know. I, I'm super, one thing to look at is, is, you know, I talked to the mayor the other day, is I'm super excited about the Vietnam Veteran Mall, um, wall that's coming. I mean, that is just gonna be so exciting. So that's something we are gonna focus in on because it's such a unique opportunity for our region. So we're gonna do blogs, we're gonna do social media, we're gonna do all these type of things to lift it up because we want as many people to see that as possible. So those type of things, when we have the additional funding, where we know we've got that, that equity aspect of it, we can even spend more money on that.
Thank you. All right, real quick for you, Councilmember Dan, do you have any comments?
Um, just that I'd concur with uh, Councilmember Van Norman in the basis of a regional approach. Um, that collective resources have greater impact than individual and that I appreciate the representation uh, from within the city of Liberty Lake to guide and direct uh, the greater tourism to resources for the city of Liquid Lake.
Thanks. I saw Councilmember Van Norman's hand back up.
I just wanted to reiterate the reason why we had gotten into this begin with, and that is to put heads in beds. Making sure that the hoteliers not only, you know, have this pass through, but also attract more people to stay at their hotels. So um, regional approach. If we're bringing in sixty thousand and we'd be bringing in a hundred and twenty thousand, that's a whole lot more in a regional approach to get them to come to Spokane County.
There's no others. I'll go ahead and take a vote. Oh, sorry, sorry, Phil. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. I gotta turn the audio off on my other computer so I can hear you. Um, can you hear me now? Yeah. Oh, I, I just have a question. Um, the, the existing contract is good for one more year. I, I'm here, Meg, I'm hearing you refer to RCWs. So when that contract expires, is the city gonna be having this discussion again about the RCW? And is the RCW call out the two dollars and the two dollars for a total of four?
No, because what, what's going to happen is you guys can create um, as a single city, if you're not in the thing, you can do whatever you want because you've got a single city TPA going right now. So you can just continue on. We would come back and continue, sign another contract with you to move forward at the two dollars or the three dollars or four dollars, whatever the city council decides.
So how is that different than, how, how does that, i- if you're, if you're encouraging the other cities to be on the county level altogether, how does our contract fit into that?
It doesn't. You guys have a completely separate contract.
So you do the market, you do the marketing for Liberty Lake completely separate?
No, we, we just combine you in with that, of course. We look at that. But it's not at the same level of apples to apples, the four dollars to two dollars aspect of it. And it's, and it, we do continue to use it for the overall marketing. But it's, it's not the same. And what we're trying to do is lift it all up to the four dollars. Clearly, we'd like to lift the funding up as much as we can so we can get that much more reach.
So instead of advertising on the inside front cover, we're on page twenty?
Not necessarily. Not, no, no, please don't take it that. We look at the entire region as a benefit to everything that we do. And so we look at different things. And there's different times of the year that we're promoting different areas heavier just because of the time of year, the type of a tourist that we can draw and those type of things. So looking at that aspect of it. But we look at, you know, we do definitely look at all the different areas that we're representing.
I mean, as has been stated, we have two businesses within the city. So it's a thirty thousand dollar uh, in, well, I guess it's not a, a hit on their, on their balance sheet, but it is something they have to collect and pay at, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember, can I just make one more comment? I, I read, reread John's email again, and I think one thing that we have not discussed is uh, what he brought up in paragraph three, and that is "The additional funds that, from the TPA assessment would only go to continue to support Visit Spokane's marketing efforts that benefit our competition and negatively impact our guests." What I think he's saying by that uh, line is that increasing it for Liberty Lake might, might help bring a lot more people to the, to the region. Where are those people going to stay? That's, I think, his point is that it, it benefiting other hotels and not necessarily, I mean, it might benefit us a little bit, but it's not necessarily benefiting their hotel as well uh, to the point that it is the others. So I, I just thought that line was important and something we haven't necessarily discussed. Thank you.
All right, any further comments? All right, not hearing any. I'll go ahead and um, call for the vote. So those in favor of joining the Spokane County Tourism Promotion Area, please say aye. And actually, if you could raise your hand so I make sure I get everybody down correctly, those favor. All right, those opposed? Gotcha. All right, looks like uh, motion fails uh, two, two, four. All right, thanks, Meg, for um, spending your time with us. Uh, and we'll, we'll talk soon because we need to, we've got other stuff to do too. So, thank you so much. Okidoki. All right, next one. Before we move, before we have a motion, um, we will go ahead and adjourn for executive session for RCW forty-two dot thirty dash one ten one B for Real Estate Matters. Um, so how long are we thinking? Fifteen minutes, you guys? Probably long enough. Let's start with fifteen minutes. We look at the clock. It's eight twenty-four. So let's just say because we may need a little bit break, break in between, but the time removed. So let's say we'll come back at eight forty-five. So there would no, be no decisions made while we're in there. So we're gonna adjourn to executive session, reconvene here at eight forty-five. Our next action item.
Are we standing here?
So we're gonna go to the conference room. Executive session's going to last another five minutes. I gotta hop back on here. Okay, give me just a moment. I'll get my zoom back up.
If I can read what's printed.
Thanks for your patience, everybody, while I try to get my zoom up here so I can effectively manage the rest of the meeting. Or not. All right, I'll just go ahead if I, hey, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, if you need to make any uh, comments, if you can just get my attention because my, I don't have my computer um, on to watch if you're looking to make a comment. All right, um, so uh, thanks, everybody, again, for your patience. Um, we are out of our executive session and um, so looking to see if we have a motion for action item D.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move General Business eleven D authorize the mayor to sign a purchase and sale agreement uh, for real property in Liberty Lake.
Great. Do we have a second?
I second that.
You have a second by Councilmember Van Norman. Okay. So for all of you out there who are sitting on pins and needles, I'll give just a little, a short background, what I can on, on this project. So um, sometimes uh, you have an aha moment and um, I was on my way back to my office from the PD a couple Wednesdays ago and looked up and there's the for sale sign on the building next to the PD. So um, did some digging around and long story short, the, the building next to the PD is for sale. It's fourteen thousand four hundred square feet. We had some discussions about um, what it would look like to possibly move the library over there and got a lot of support for that. So um, the action that is up for us for vote right now is to authorize me to sign a purchase and sale agreement for that building. It does have um, some time in there for us to do our due diligence on some inspections and whatnot, and then a quick close after that. So that's a high level what we're looking at. And um, and if anybody has any further comments from the council? All right, not seeing any. Um, all in favor of approving Mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement for the potential library building, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Not hearing. Motion passes six zero. Thanks, everybody. We'll keep everybody posted. Okay, we're back to council comments. Does anybody have any further comments? I think future, all right, public hearings and appeals, we have none. No resolutions, no ordinances, no emergency ordinances. Introduction of upcoming agenda items. Uh, I think everybody's got a copy of that. So we are, so right now, uh, the only thing we're looking at, um, on August second is six P M trailhead workshop. We will check with Kyle. Uh, I don't know if the audit is going to be complete early enough for him to want to address the financial policy updates at the first meeting. So um, that will probably tentatively be the second meeting in August. Capital facilities plan is September, budget October. And then there's the other three that we have on there. Code of Ethics, Social Media, we'll, we're, I'll be coming back to you after I have a chance to sit down with David um, on that. Selkirk Middle School and Hub Trail is in the hands of the school district and county, and their superintendent is just finally trying to get it up to speed. I think he is still in the process of moving. And library policy is still being worked on by the board. So does anybody have anything else that um, might need a workshop on the second? Do you want to add a follow-up ARPA discussion? Councilmember Cargill?
Yes, Mayor, uh, per the vote that we just took, if we can, um, put a discussion about the building.
Sure.
On the, um, August second agenda. Um, and where we are with that feasibility that you mentioned, and then perhaps as well, um, if Kyle is able to join us, the discussion about funding.
Yep, okay. Yeah, he'll be back. He's on vacation right now. Got it.
And Madam Mayor, are we adding the, um, the band booster for the August second?
Um, yeah, we, that, that's, that's what I meant by the ARPA follow-up. So yeah, we can put that on there. All right, so adding for the second during our regular session, uh, update and funding discussion on the building. And, um, ARPA slash band boosters.
One more, uh, potential, uh, mayor?
Yes.
It, it would be great if we could hear from the Liberty Launch Academy. I know we had previously talked about that.
Yeah.
Um, and they are getting ready to launch in September, I believe it is. We took a, a tour of their building a couple of weeks ago. Um, and they've got a lot of interactive, interesting programs that they're putting forward for the kids. So it might, uh, be nice to have a special presentation from them.
I will text the owner tomorrow and see if that date works for him. Or for his head of school. All right, that fills up our meeting, I think, for the, for the second. All right, so we'll open, um, back up to citizen comments. Again, I don't have, my zoom's not coming up. So, um, I don't see anybody here in our audience wanting to make a comment. If there's anybody online, please send Todd Henderson a message in chat. Um, and you will have up to three minutes to make a citizen comment. Nope, no, okay. Sounds like we have no citizen comments. So we're, we're, we are. I know it's, it seems funny to have two separate executive sessions, but we do have another one coming up. Um, for RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten, one, I. Um, Lisa, um, how much time do you think you're going to need?
I think we will probably need about ten minutes. It's just, uh, it's just to inform council on what's going on.
Okay, great. So we will go ahead and adjourn at eight fifty-seven for ten minutes. Um, let's give it a little bit extra time. Let's say we'll be back at nine ten, though we know decisions made. And when we come out, we will adjourn. So again, thanks everybody for attending and for your patience. Um, and unless you just want to stick around for us, our adjournment, um, have a great night. Thanks. Executive session is going to last another five minutes. Try that again. Hi, we're back from executive session, nine thirteen PM. We had no actions and if there are no objections from the council, we will adjourn for the evening. Any objections? All right, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.